Good evening, we'll call to order the regular meeting for the Oneonta City School District Board of Education Wednesday, March 6, 2022. We'll skip the Budge Allegiance this evening and begin with the roll call.
Mr. Grau?
Yeah.
Mrs. Burnsberg?
Here.
Mr. Gaseford?
Here.
Mrs. Kirkowski?
Here.
Mr. Beckerink?
President.
Mr. Ianelli?
Here.
And Mr. Taming is absent. Thank you.
Reggie, just so you know, Mr. Taming is in the participants' um side. I don't know, Joe, if you can.
I'm emailing Joe.
Oh, I think he might have just gone out. It looks like he might have just gone out. He was listed as an attendee just a minute ago, so just wanted to let you know that.
Okay.
Thank you. Should we try to resend a link to him?
I'm emailing, I'm texting him, telling him how to find it.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. So for, before we move on, for those of you who are attending, we have two opportunities to address the board. If you wish to do a statement to the board, you can use the QA spot at the bottom of your screen and type it in there, and we'll read it at the appropriate time. Resolved that the action or to accept the agenda as amended.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved to accept the minutes of the February 16th, 2022 Board of Education meeting as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay, this brings us to our first opportunity to address the board. I know we just kind of sprung this on you, but there is a, there is a second opportunity coming up a little bit further down in the agenda, so if you do have something, you can type it in the QA section there. Resolved that the reading of the Teaching and Administrative Personnel Memorandum 2022-3 be waived and that the action item stated March 9, 2022 be approved as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Thank you, Mr. Grau. We only have a certified personnel memorandum this evening. On there, you will note the retirement of Kathy Soroka. Kathy has served our English as new language learners for years here in the district. She's truly helped shape their lives and we're gonna miss her greatly, but we certainly wish her well in her retirement. You'll also note that we have some long-term subs as well as some additional substitute teachers joining us, and we are always grateful for them. Lastly, you will note that we have some coaching changes and additions, and we wish all of them much success, as we appreciate all of our coaches and for all the great work that they do. So other than that, relatively quiet personnel memorandum this evening.
See, he tweaks as being approved as modified baseball coach. That's excellent.
You know, I didn't, I didn't want to say anything just because the Red Sox connection, but.
Yeah, I know, I know. We'll let that slide.
Yes, we will. I thought we had standards. Yeah. They'll be great. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, sorry.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta get used to that cadence, sorry. Any opposed? Extentions? All right. Joe, I, Joe, I apologize. Um, I didn't realize, you know, it just didn't dawn on me that you hadn't attended a meeting with us this way, and I should have kind of reached out and told you how to get the link, so I'm glad that you made it. We just got down to the superintendent's report. So, Tom? All right, you know, unfortunately, due to the weather, we're meeting like this, I think we're all looking forward to our school showcases to continue. I know Riverside had something wonderful planned, so we'll, we'll have to look forward to seeing that in the, in the near future. So, you know, as you can imagine, today's weather threw us quite a curveball. You know, 5:00 AM, I was up like we usually do, speaking to our road crews and with the town and the city. There were no concerns at that point, you know, we just reviewed the forecast together. And, you know, we, we were looking at between, you know, one to three or two to four inches of snow over an extended period of time. Both the town and the city, and of course, our team here in the district felt that they could handle that very easily. So it was an advisory, you know, for, you know, the majority of the day. Until the stall, the front seemed to stall a little bit, and the storm was upgraded from an advisory to a winter storm warning with five to nine inches. So, so through quite a curveball, but we were able to get everyone home safely. By that time, it was, was far too late to dismiss early. You know, obviously, you know that we canceled after-school activities. I heard, you know, about an hour ago that all buses had, you know, returned to Silas Lane. And thankfully, there were no issues related to that, so I do hear that spring is on its way. So hopefully sooner rather than later. Just want to share that we continue to have three emergency days left. I, I think it's getting to the point now where I'm gonna have to put something out, so families know, you know, how to prepare for the days that we are going to quote-unquote "give back" to get us down to 180 days, as well as our faculty and staff members. So, you know, if we are still carrying three days into the April break, our plan is to use day one, the Monday of our return, so that would be April 18th. That's the Monday following spring recess. If we're, day two would be Friday, May 27th, this is the Friday before Memorial Day. And then day three would be the Monday following Memorial Day, which is our contractual day if we have a day remaining. So then if we need a snow day prior to spring recess, obviously, we will no longer be off on Monday, April 18th. If we need to use a, what would ultimately be our third emergency day, we would no longer be off on Tuesday, May 30, May 31st, and should we need a fourth snow day, we would no longer be off on Friday, May 27th. So I will get that out to families soon. I will get that information out to you all as well. It's this way everyone can plan accordingly. Just want to congratulate all of our winter athletes and their coaches for representing our school community so well this winter season. You know, obviously, COVID played a, a role in all of that, but, you know, our students and their coaches, as always, did, you know, just did a great job. They not only represent themselves and their families, but, and not even just our school, but our community as well, and they continue to do that. So very, very well. Just wanted to share that this past weekend, we hosted all-county music here in Oneonta. Just want to congratulate all of the students, whether they're ours or from the elsewhere around the county. They just did a wonderful, wonderful job. I will tell you that Oneonta was so well-represented, just that we had so many of our students who had earned the opportunity to participate in that. And also want to congratulate and thank all of our Oneonta City School District music educators, you know, who continue to collaborate and do, do a great job with our students and our music program. And lastly, last night was the Pops concert at the high school, and, you know, just amazing as always. So congratulations not only, not only to Mr. DePaolo and Mr. Horn, but again, you know, by the time our students get to the high school, it's, it's a team effort. So I congratulate all of our district's music educators, but also our students who just continue to shine in that environment. And, and I thank their families for always supporting their students. You know, growing up as a drummer since I've been seven, you know, I, I realize now that I really put my parents and my, my brothers through, through a lot of unnecessary noise. So anyway, other than that, just a lot of, a lot of good stuff, so I congratulate everyone, all involved. And that's all I have for you. Very good. Any questions? We do look forward to the Riverside presentation when we can get down there in, in June. Unfortunately, it's gonna be a while, but I know they have worked hard on it, and we'll, we'll see you then. I do want to give an update to the attendees. Instead of typing your comment in, in the Q and A, if you just type that you wish to speak and your name, then we'll be able to actually allow you to speak, and you can have your, make your opportunity, or take the opportunity to address the board at that time. But we'll move on now to the business manager's report. Resolved that the reading of Financial Memorandum 2020, 2022-3 be waived and that the financial action items stated March 9, 2022 be approved as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Yes, so the first item on there are musicians for the pit band, for the musical, and those actually are funded by the Drama Club. A few years back, we decided that they could keep the ticket money from the sales, and then they would pay these extras. So that will be funded by the Drama Club. The consultant service contract with Heidi Buzzy, that's the contract that we've had in the past. I know it goes back a little ways. There were, there was some confusion on this because they thought that she was still appointed because she had the contract before, so they, they just thought that it continued throughout, you know, till whenever she stopped doing it. So they now realize that has to be done annually, so that's why you'll see that one's a little bit late. The cooperative gas bid, that's a consortium that we do for gas with different bosties, and I think that's gonna be good to be in a consortium bidding that. And then the next time that, that we have a meeting, you'll see some other energy bids. We have two consultants bidding out some energy for us, because as you know, the energy costs are going, they're skyrocketing right now. So we're looking, and we'll talk about it in the next finance committee meeting, we talked about it at the last one, but we'll have some bids. I have some bids that came in, and they'll refresh them for the next board, board meeting, so that we can lock in some energy prices. And I also have a meeting with our energy manager, because I think we're gonna have to, you know, revamp our energy program and go back at that hardcore. We've been a little bit lax lately. We're still doing a good job, but we have been a little bit lax, and with the energy prices going the way they are, we are gonna have to really hit that hard again. The CBIZ valuation, that's our annual update to our fixed asset inventory, and that's required by our insurance company. We are only doing the electronic update, so that's the 1,013, 1, 1370 amount, not that $6,000 amount, so that's been corrected. So when we send that back, it'll have the correct box initials, and then you see a couple surplus items, the truck and some technology. We did finally get the truck from the SAM grant, and that took a couple years actually to get that. So we finally got that the day before the last snowstorm, so it came in just in time. And then, because the trucks were taking so long to manufacture and, and, you know, get to us, we said, you know, for the truck that was in the budget, not the grant truck, you know, just go on the lots and see if there's something there. And so they did find something, and they got that on the road Friday, I think. So we do finally have our two trucks, and that is replacing this 2009 F-350, that's in really bad shape. So. And that's it for the financial memorandum.
2009, that's, got some, cut some years out of that.
Yeah.
They were rough ones, though, Bill. I know. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Extentions? Reggie, I'm assuming I have to do this next recommended action also, right? Yes, okay. A request for an impartial hearing having been made, and the board president having pointed Michael Lazon in accordance with board policy, who is the next available person from the district's rational hearing rotational hearing officer list on a motion by?
So moved.
And the second by?
So moved. Second.
Michael Lazon is appointed hearing officer in regard to a pending request for a hearing, and is requested to issue a decision within the appropriate time period of the law and regulations. I'm assuming that's it, no vote required? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, yes, a vote.
Yes, a vote? Oh, okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Extentions? Thank you, and now to the budget report.
Okay, so just to give you an update of where we are in the process, I just sent, I was gonna do a little, just a really short PowerPoint at the board meeting, but I just sent it to you by email, so if you look at your email, and it'll be posted on the website tomorrow. So basically, as of right now, you know, we've been working on it and just changing things as we get pricing, as people know things. So each department has submitted their requests, and I know, you know, there's still some updates that they're working on. That's been put in a Google Drive for all of us to work with, that Colleen worked on to get that, so that everybody could share information that's live. And then tomorrow, so all of that, that has been input into the budget, and, sorry, my dog is jumping on me. So it's all been, it's input into the budget, and we're gonna meet tomorrow to go through, she's a psycho, to go through, you know, everything's not gonna make the, the final budget. So we're gonna have to, we're gonna discuss that as an admin team, and then start narrowing down from there and prioritizing, so that, you know, we can bring you something that we want to move forward with, or that we want you, you know, to move forward with. So what they'll be deciding this year is obviously the adoption of the budget, where, wherever we finalize it, which I think will be somewhere around, you know, what our, our budget is now for this year. I don't see a huge change in the, in next year's budget. The purchase of two buses. And that, you will, will be asking you to approve that at the next board meeting, that proposition to go on the ballot. And this, this time, there are four seats up for the board, so there'll be three, three-year terms and one for a one-year term. So that's a lot of board members up this year. And then we had also discussed the possibility, and this has not been decided, but we've been talking about it in finance. We've discussed the possibility of a capital reserve. We're trying to get some costs together now, and that's with the funding that we have remaining from last year. And that mostly has to do with the Gray Barn, which is unsafe, really. So some key dates for the budget, we got the governor's proposal in January, as we expected. We're still waiting for the next round, the legislative proposal. And at that point, we'll likely see an increase in the foundation aid. I'm not sure how much, I'm not sure where that's gonna end up, but we do expect a little bit of an increase just because of the consumer price index being higher than when, than what the governor's numbers were based on. And we do know that we went through this before, our tax levy limit, which is due to the Comptroller's Office by March 1st, so we had to calculate that early. That is 0.53%, so that's gonna generate about $118,000 if the board decides to go up to the tax cap. So that really doesn't give us a lot of extra money. April 25th, the property tax report card is due to SED, so the board would have to adopt a budget to put out to the voters before that, and that will be at the board meeting scheduled for April 20th. And then we'll have a public hearing on May 4th, and then the vote is always the third Tuesday in May, so that's gonna be April 17th. The only change from that is it will be at the foothills, so that's where it has been, and that's gonna be from 11 to 8 instead of 12 to 9, because Reggie said she's getting too old to stay up until 9 o'clock counting votes, so. But that just made more sense to do it during the day. So we take a lot of things into consideration. We look at the staffing, we look at retirements, we look at, I'm looking at my dog right now. We look at the enrollment, the changes in program that we need, some transportation needs, you know, special ed, we look at all that. And then this year, we've kind of added a, a new thing to that, and that's the grant requirements, and they're, they're, they really do affect our budget. And that's kind of big, that it's, it's difficult to work around them. So on the revenue side, we look at, you know, what are we bringing in to cover our spending plan? State aid, which, you know, we have a number, and, and, and it wasn't a bad, it wasn't a bad number, but we're still waiting for the next number to come. We think about the tax climate, we think about the programs that we share with other districts. Sometimes we have students come in from other districts, sometimes we share therapists or things like that with other districts. So all of these things, we really have to take into consideration when we're building the budget. So for the preliminary budget, right now, it's up just a little bit over $400,000, which is about 1%, which, you know, it's, it's not really bad. The major increase by category, if we categorize it, is there have been a lot of furniture and equipment requests, so that's half, that's over half of what the budget has increased, so that's about $208,000. We have an increase in tuitions by about $51,000, and so when the, when the governor's proposal came out, they said, you know, well, all these private, private placement agencies, they haven't had a good increase in a while, so they're looking to increase the rates that they're allowing them to charge us. So that in turn is going to increase our costs for these outside placements, and there's nothing you can do about that. That's just, it's a state set rate. So whereas we talked about before, we're expecting some fairly significant increases in utility costs, so we really need to be looking at that. We've had several new position requests, and these are things that we'll talk about tomorrow with the admin team. We'll talk a lot about the furniture and equipment and the personnel requests that have been made. They're probably not all going to end up in the final budget and the final plan. We have removed outside programs like the driver ed, the alternative ed, things like that, that really didn't have anything to do with our students. We have eliminated those incarcerated youth. We did have contracts with Dalhuy and Cooperstown, which were helping us pay for that position, and they, since there's really no incarcerated youth anymore, that really didn't make sense for them to be paying us, so they didn't want a contract with us, so we in turn are not doing that program. If we have somebody, we would probably just send a tutor over to the jail. And then actually, on a good note, our health and, our health insurance premiums have gone down slightly, which is really a nice, not a surprise, they told us about it, but you know, you don't expect that to happen. One thing, though, we did plan on, and I wasn't able to make the meeting, but I know Amy went, and we are expecting another surplus this next year. And the way the consortium works, they have to give us that surplus. And now some schools don't want it because of the federal money that's coming in. And I guess it was about half and half, it looks like, but it wasn't enough for a quorum to change the amount, so it's gonna be on the next, my understanding from Amy is it's gonna be on the next health insurance consortium meeting for another vote. You know, my thought is it's our money, we want to get it in, and we'll take care of it, rather than having the consortium hold it, because, you know, a lot of times, they say, okay, you'll get it, don't worry about it, but you know, they change the way that they calculate premiums. They're constantly looking at different ways to do things, and so, you know, I don't want it to get lost in the shuffle. And three years down the road, you know, they say, oh, well, we're calculating the premiums differently, so we're using that fund balance. So I, I would be more in favor of getting the money now, and, and we'll, we'll handle, you know, investing it. So I guess that has to go to another vote, though, because it was a half and half. So on the revenue side, some, the tax cap we talked about was about $118,000. The pilots are up about $85,000, and that does affect our tax cap. Our tuitions and all the miscellaneous revenues, we're looking at about like an $88,000 decrease. So our state aid at this point is up about $464,000, and, you know, if you look back at what I just said about the expenditures being up that much, you know, you think, oh, wow, okay, so that's gonna cover it, we're all set. But we do have a reduction in federal aid, the federal aid line, by about $682,000. So this is where we're coming up with a gap, and that's because when we got the federal stimulus money, we weren't sure what we were gonna do with it, so we knew we needed some things, and we, and it was, it's accounted for differently this round than it was last, last round. It was supposed to go in our general fund, this round it's not. So we had some of those things, for example, like summer school in our budget, but that's pulled out of the budget, but the revenue is pulled out also. So you see it on both sides. So that's why you'll see a decrease in the federal aid, because it's not that we're not getting it, it's just shifted over to a different accounting system. So it's, it's accounted for in special aid instead of general fund where it had been in the past. And we're also looking to reduce our fund balance appropriation that we use to balance the budget. We've had it at about $1 million. I did drop it down to about $500,000. I don't know if that's where it's gonna stay, but it, you know, it's not a good idea to be reliant on a million dollars of, that's basically a savings account, that's not revenue, to balance our budget. So we're doing what we can to get that down, because it's just, like I said, not good to be dependent on that. So that leaves us with about a million-dollar shortfall, but it, it sounds alarming, it's, it's not yet, because we still have, you know, the state aid picture to come in and some, some things to talk about tomorrow with our admin team. So with, with a combination of things, we're gonna get a really good budget to present to you for approval. So some of the challenges that we have with the budget is, we have, I think, 15, 15 positions in the stimulus funding. And so a lot of those, we want to absorb in our general fund budget, and we have a couple years to plan that, but a couple years is gonna come pretty quickly. So what we need to do is figure out, okay, what can we do without, because we can't just shift them all into the budget. So this is, this is a challenge that we, we have. If we want these positions, we want to keep them, and they're working, it's gonna be a trade-off. So we can't, you know, we can't keep adding positions unless they're necessary, but if they are necessary, then we have to figure out what we can live without, because you just can't keep piling them on over the years when the funding drops off. The other challenge that we have is that if the budget did go contingent, the administrative portion of the budget can't be higher than the percent it was of the administrative plus the program. So we have to really be cognizant of the administrative. of the administrative plus the program. So we have to really be cognizant of the administrative piece of the budget because that is limited. Um, and then a lot of these grants have maintenance of effort requirements. So we can't really drop the budget below what it was last year because then we're saying, um, you know, that we're using the federal money instead of us use, you know, making the effort to support our own budget. So there are a lot of maintenance of effort things that we have to think about in there. And we have to show that we're putting our best effort forward and that, and in order to get this grant funding. So that really complicates us a lot because we have a lot of grant funding coming in right now. So it makes it really, really difficult um, to build our budget. Um, and you know, say we have to spend a lot of money, um, if we don't really need to spend it. So it's, it, it's juggling those kind of things together. Um, and then we talked about, you know, reducing our dependency on the fund balance. So um, and then basically when it's all said and done, you know, we have the point five three percent tax cap. We cannot tell people what their tax bill is going to be. You know, it could be less. It could be point five three, it could be plus two percent. So um, our budget is, the tax cap is a big number and that's really kind of what the voters are voting on. Um, but we can't tell people what their individual tax bill is going to be based on that. And I think that, you know, that's pretty much where we are in the process. And I think we're gonna iron out a lot tomorrow and, you know, get our final numbers in there. So we should be in good shape to give you um, something really good really soon. Okay.
Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, dog, too.
Yeah.
Deal with that all day.
Yeah, sorry about that. She's a psycho.
No, I, I, like I said, I, I'm in meetings all day with people who are home and their dogs hear their voices and they come on. Just what they do.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, that brings us to our second opportunity to address the board. I don't see that anyone has put in a request. I'll wait a second. Again, if you wanna type in the QA that you wanna address the board. Mrs. Moore can unmute you. All right. So let's move to uh, round table. Maggie, tell us what's going on. My dogs just went outside, speaking of dogs.
Um, so obviously like this is our week back out masks. Um, everyone in my classes are for the most part choosing not to wear masks, but there are a couple of people and everyone's been really respectful about people who have chosen to wear masks. Um, a lot of our teachers wore masks for the first day back. So it's been a pretty um, good transition so far. Um, and then for other important news, um, the history club is actually doing a bulletin board that's for supporting Ukraine. Um, so I thought that was a fun fact to share and that's it.
All right, thank you. Sue?
All right. Um, my dog's barking because your dog is barking. Dogs are, um, I do not have any committee reports. I did attend the uh, insurance consortium uh, meeting with Amy on Friday. Uh, had a very nice dinner that was put on by the BT BOCs students. Um, it was interesting. I'd never been to one of those before. Uh, but like Lisa said, the vote came down. There were, there are sixteen schools involved. There were fifteen present. And they needed one more to go with the yes vote in order to have that money sent back to the districts now. Um, but it was interesting. I would go again if any needs a date, if Lisa can't go. So, um, but that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Joe?
Um, thank you. I really don't have anything to share. Uh, we have a meeting before the, uh, finance committee meets before the next meeting. So hopefully we'll have more to share then. But thank you for the update budget process, Lisa. Appreciate it. And I know it's a lot of work for everyone. So thank you all for that. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Mike?
Yeah, I'm in the same boat. I don't have um, really anything to share. Um, and thank you, Maggie, for the, that, that update.
Amy?
Uh, I don't have much to share. I just wanted to add on to the health uh, insurance consortium meeting and that explaining a little bit more about this um, surplus is that some of the schools have it and some of the schools don't. Um, and uh, you know, we are seeing some savings uh, because there was very little flames in two thousand and twenty. Um, and even so, even similarly in two thousand and twenty-one. So, so everybody's rating is a little bit lower. Obviously, there's anticipation in the next couple of years that'll go back up. But the consortium is being very conservative in their planning. And this surplus is above and beyond a very healthy um, contingency uh, reserve balance that they have. Um, so you know, it's interesting, you know. Uh, it was interesting that, you know, some wanna be even more conservative and, but that money is the school districts who are entitled to the surplus, it's their money. And you know, at some point it will come back to us. It's just a matter, you know, of, of when. And um, we had hoped it would be in fall of, of two thousand and twenty-two. But uh, the vote has been kicked to um, October, November, whenever the next meeting is. So. Bye, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean?
Uh, no committee information for me to report. Quickly, congratulations on the retirements, the new coaches for the spring sports. And speaking of spring sports, I believe they start the fourteenth. Everybody's getting excited for that and hopefully mother nature will start cooperating with us. Uh, Maggie, thank you so much for the comments regarding your fellow classmates. Cause I mean, I think you, you made a good point that some students wanna wear them, some students don't wanna wear them. And, and I think it's a great thing that we all support one another and during these times. Um, the governor was willing to give everybody that option and we as a district obviously took that and we're moving forward with it. So it's nice for me to go to school and see some of these teachers and students without a mask on. And those who are still wearing masks, hey, we, we all make choices. And um, but thank you, Maggie. I'm really glad you made a comment about that. Other than that, I, I have nothing else to add tonight.
All right, Dan.
Uh, okay, yeah, I have nothing really new to share. Thanks, Maggie, for your update with some of the things that are going around in the school. And uh, thanks, Lisa, again for doing the buzzer, budget presentation. You do a great job putting things in perspective and everything. So thanks for all, all your hard work on that. I know it's not easy. Um, I did have one more thing, but I just slipped my mind. Um, oh, the uh, in health insurance premiums, maybe somebody can answer this. Is the decrease on that strictly related to user rating or is there just an overall decrease in insurance premiums from the insurance consortium? Or is it all strictly based on user ratings? Not sure if somebody could answer that or not.
So there's um, there's a, a base increase. So I forgot what the base was at five percent. Um, I don't have that with me, but I think the base increase was about five percent. So everybody gets a five percent increase in the premium based on the consortium as a whole. And then they factor in our experience rating. So our experience rating was below one. And so that's why ours went down and it's slightly, but it's still down. And that's almost unheard of, you know, in this day and age with health insurance. So um, it was good that um, you know, we've, I, you know, we haven't had high claims. Sometimes there's a really, really high cost claim and you know, we're thankful that we have the insurance to provide to people. Um, but we just haven't had that. So that ours decreasing really had to do with our experience rating.
And if I could just quick add, it's based on um, uh, several year time span. Um, so that, that factors into it too. If we had a big claims year and that's still in there, that, that gets um, factored into that experience factor. And there was some discussion, it's still very far off, but they're considering going, I think it's like a three-year or a five-year experience rating um, window. There's some discussion about opening that rating up to the uh, lifetime um, in the consortium. But that's way down the road. Right now, we're still working in that three to five year.
Yeah, I think it's three or something like that now.
Thank you.
Does, does moving some of our retirees have any impact on that?
I'm not sure yet. Um, I mean, it certainly has saved us a lot of money. Um, it did affect other districts more than it affected us in a, in a negative way. Because you know, they were using that retiree, the premiums, charging us the full premium for just a, you know, a wraparound plan. And they were using that to help offset the active employees. Um, you know, I think we're, we have about sixty or a little bit more than sixty. And when I talked to our consultant, um, he said that we really don't use our retirees to fund our actives um, as much as other people do. So we have a good active rating. So it has only helped us really at this point to move them out.
Good. Okay, thank you. Um, I don't have any, many reports either. I, just a reminder though to myself, we need to circle back on the BEI group and uh, and also there will be some uh, update from policy. Uh, we did meet and um, we're gonna start kind of dividing things up for, for review. Uh, and that, that's another step that we're gonna have to do. So that, that one's coming also. All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of special education and personnel.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Close? All right, we're adjourned.
Probably in saying something, hang on.
I was just making sure that Joe Teming is all set with his exact link. And I was gonna share that that came in a separate email. So you guys will have a separate email for me for that link.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, good. All right, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good night.
Yeah.